Okay, Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, April 19th. It's 5:30 in the evening. Present are Select Board members Fox, Moglen, DeeDee, and Chief Administrative Officer Steinhardt.
Good evening. Seeing how there's nobody here, we'll skip public comments. We need to acknowledge payroll warrant 1-8-2-5 from April 17th in the amount of $198,923.96. We have a bunch of minutes. Do we have executive session minutes from March 27?
Yes, you do.
Why don't you kick them both out and we'll knock them both out?
Okay.
That'll be March 27th and April the 10th.
I'll make a motion for the March 27th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion for Tuesday, April 10th, executive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done and done, regular session, April 9th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
April 10th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action. Wally Park Project Change Order Number One invoices with our best friends at JL Construction.
Is this the end of it, Carl? I mean, like, just...
What?
No, no, he's not.
Yeah, just another, like, are we all caught up with him as... I know there were some outstanding issues that they've been working on. Were we all cleaned up and done?
Yeah, the current payment due, less retained, which I believe that zeros everything out and the total completed work to date is, um... will be at 100% and the previous payments were at 97.91. So this, this is gonna close it out and that's why you see with the change order, there's some add-ons and deducts.
Yep.
So that ends up being the whole, um, the trade-offs.
So the net of the contract is $849 and 89 cents less than the original contract price. So the total is $295,650.11.
Right, versus the original contract price of $296,500. So it was signed by a majority of the, um, members?
I see that.
Of the park and recreation?
So I'll make a motion.
So to sign off?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And again, it's both a change order and a requisition.
Yes, there are two...
Items.
Signatures.
I guess it's over here.
Over a pen.
How does it over here?
Looks like they started Veteran's Street nearby the other day. Looks like they're moving right along.
Right.
Lot of vehicles on the little street.
It's gonna be a good thing to get there.
No, yeah, it's wonderful.
Next item is our community food pantry donation request. This is from Diane Mason Arnold Chair and Sally Munson Director.
Do you remember what we gave them last year?
Nobody?
I'll make a motion to, to whatever we did last year.
Second.
Subject to Carl finding out we gave them last year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. DPW request with MB Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has been also, this has been sent out by all sorts of agencies. So it is a review that we could participate in. Even the regional planning agencies looking into it for other entities. So the director is just giving us notice about being able to pursue this grant opportunity.
I happened to speak to a Select Board member from another community who informed me about this program. And they're actually going for grant funding to address their regional sewer treatment facility.
As part of a vulnerability issue.
Right. So, um, I, I think, and I was told by one of our legislators that there is gonna be a substantial amount of monies put into this.
It said 50 million.
Right, so...
That's substantial. So any particular project?
I, I was very concerned about global warming and the effect it's gonna have on some of our culverts in town because of, of, you know, people losing access to emergency services. So I would like...
Especially on, on critical road infrastructure rates?
Right, I'm very concerned about that. So I would hope that we would perhaps look at that as quickly as possible.
Okay, so this basically says they range in a, for 15,000 to 20,000. Is that usually the first step?
First step, from what I'm told. Because you're not addressing a regional or sewer treatment facility for 15,000 to 20,000.
Right.
Right, so I think that's just the first step.
So you're...
This is just to achieve designation status with the assistance of a trainer is 15,000 to 20,000.
Right.
So that's how you get to be an MVP member.
Yeah.
So I guess we need...
So you would wanna go ahead and support this?
Absolutely.
And then, and then you would say at a future date what you'd want to target on this program?
Correct.
And I think the chairman also mentioned a very good project. The dredging of Congammon Lake in the, the canal so that, uh... What would we possibly do if those lakes backed up? Could affect also another state and other communities.
Okay, so we'll let him go forward with the first step.
So we should probably vote to support this, right? Based on that?
Make a motion for support.
There you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Flag and banner donation acceptance from Sodom Mountain Campground, $150. Therapeutic Massage, $150, and a flag for $50. And Summer House Banner, $150. We need a motion to accept those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to sign those, Carl, or the acceptance?
Uh, yeah, I don't think you need to.
Just need to check out. Uh, Cub Scout Pack, 338, blue and gold banquet, uh, 4/29, 3 to 5. That's a Sunday, Monday?
Sunday, Sunday.
Sunday, Monday.
I think that's a Sunday.
Sunday, it says right here, Sunday, April 29th, 3 to 5. Please arrive by 2:45 at the Legion. Join us for dinner and dessert and bring your family. Um, unfortunately, I will be out of town.
I have to work that day.
If anyone can make it.
All right.
No pressure.
Always a good time.
No pressure.
Always a good time.
Yeah.
You know? American Legion Post, I was even over there today, you know, working on electrical issues, so, you know.
I was there last night for this spaghetti supper.
Yep.
Oh, good. Well attended? Glad to hear it.
They're having one...
They are.
Aren't they having one in, in May for the Police Association?
They are. And yesterday was for the Southwick Civic Fund for the fireworks.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Did they publicize it?
Cause I didn't know about it.
A little.
A little.
It's, it's...
You got a couple people to come out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I brought some with me.
That's what I'm hoping, okay.
I never even heard of it. I didn't either.
They just started this once a month, Wednesdays.
Yeah.
Except next month it'll be early because of the police thing, they get for the date to work.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, they're trying. Here's some young guys in there that I never met before. You know, and there was the old timers who let the young guys do everything.
Yeah.
And of course, who's the guy your neighbor?
Mr. Andrews.
I couldn't, with his hat off?
John.
I don't recognize him with his hat on.
Yeah, John's the Graves officer.
Yeah, so John was there until he put his hat on. Then he started yelling at me, I said, "I know I know you."
He said, "One of the nicest men in town."
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Andrews, love you to pieces.
Introduce him to everybody, you know, great guy. But just with his hat off, he just like...
Serve this guy.
Not, you know, like, it can't be two of them guys. Gotta be him.
Next is a letter from Sophia Bitsis, Director of Operations from R. Leveque Associates. And it's a request to withdraw the Zone Map Amendment. We had a proposed warrant article for a zone change at 306 Feeding Hills Road. And the petitioner Tyrone Development, owner of the above referenced property, is requesting to withdraw the petition for a...
Yeah, that was gonna be a future town meeting.
Oh, it wasn't this one, it was future?
Right, it was not gonna be on this one.
Correct. Wasn't gonna make it, yeah.
No.
So, so there you go. It's withdrawn. Do we have to vote to accept the request?
I would do that. I would sign off on that and just say voted to accept withdrawal so that we could record it in both the town clerk's office, the planning board, and send something back to the requesting party.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That thing is all over the place.
Sneaky.
Okay. And, uh, this is the biggest decision we'll make all night. This is the proposed cover of the, uh...
Town Report.
Annual Town Report cover.
It's more like a scenic thing instead of a building? You've had landscapes?
This almost looks like today, more snow, more snow, and more snow.
That's what people wanna see.
I think the snow theme's a great idea this year.
Uh, there you go. Beautiful.
Okay. All in favor?
Sign that one, just to sign it.
Excellent work.
Can you put the April snowstorm on it, though? Let's just, no, we won't have a difference. April in Southwick.
Well, you know, the interesting thing, remember, we, we, many years ago, we had a one foot of snow.
Oh, I remember well.
And yet here we are, we've been incurring money for snow and ice related expenses halfway through the month.
Well, we saved a fortune on Monday.
We did. It was an arrow swing. Did we sign it?
I just had Russ sign it, that's good enough. I don't think this, that monumental...
He'll probably be chairman when the book comes out anyways.
Home and Business Event, The Ranch, oh, good point, that's next Tuesday. 4/24. Uh, 4:30 to 7. I have it on my calendar. Make sure it's on your calendar.
I said that to you.
Yeah, you did. I just tried to make my schedule. Yeah.
I have it on my calendar, sweet.
Yes.
Even have a ticket. Okay.
Yeah.
We don't really need a ticket.
No.
I don't know.
Well, they were gonna pass out tickets to the businesses to encourage more people to attend. They figured if they have a ticket in their hand...
Sure.
It would be a reminder to attend.
Yeah. Like a disco.
I don't know, that was their theory, it's, hey, try anything, it's marketing.
Okay.
So next we have a brief approval of a letter of understanding with Library Director. And she has already executed the thing.
Yep, that's based upon the agreements.
This is on the agreements we already set forth.
That is correct.
So we need a motion to sign it, or we just sign it?
Make a motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She's probably gonna ding me for penmanship.
Well, you don't have to worry about that. Long as I'm there.
It'll make you look good.
Yeah, don't you worry. Taking all the heat.
This Thursday thing's not bad.
Yeah. Yeah.
I like that gold paperclip.
I know, it must be...
Was that an honorary thing?
It's probably a library thing.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe it was a Clippy Award?
Could be.
The Clippy Award?
For 2016 or 2017?
You've heard of the ESP awards?
Oh, yeah.
The Clippy Award.
Clippy Award. That could be the front cover of the book.
The Clippy?
Just a big picture of the paperclip.
The Clippy Award.
And we have a letter of understanding with the Council on Aging Director. This is also one that we've already been through, we just need to...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's still left out there, there's a DPW one?
Uh, well, we have the tentative agreement with them through a email today. So that's going to be...
Yeah, process.
That, that's going to be signed by them and the board has already authorized to have to sign it.
Right.
Um, and then the only other one would be the, um, the building inspector who's just recovering from his...
Tommy Johnson.
So it'll be Tommy Johnson.
Hopefully he'll, Kurt Ball will still be able to hit nine.
So that will be, he'll be doing that in the next week or two. Yeah. Not a problem.
Cause he can't sign right now if he's got one.
Yeah.
New business?
Um, the only thing I wanted to mention to the board is the, um... Um, you know, Maureen Pacella from Eastern Bank used to work under Chet Fordish.
Right, yep.
Um, Eastern Bank is no longer going to be in the financial advisor services business. And she's gonna be retiring, so...
Is she going on her own?
Uh, no, she's gonna be retiring.
That's it.
So there's, when I spoke to Bond Council, there's only two financial institutions that provide that service. So, um, myself, the treasure collector and the town accountant are gonna be interviewing people from those two other major banks that work with Bond Council. And, you know, within the next, a month or so, because she's gonna be leaving and they're gonna be closing down mid-June. So that's just the, the nature of how banking works and how these services get provided to municipalities. Just as we've seen, uh, the number of law firms that handle municipal bond council services has also shrunk over the years. Ropes and Gray used to do that. And now it's, uh, you know, Lord Lock Manly or something, so, you know. So I'm just letting you know, another part of change. Cause that is a valuable...
The only thing that's constant is change.
That's a valuable thing in terms of when we work with those people, partner with them, and they give us amortization schedules and principal and interest schedules.
And it's great when you have a working relationship that you develop, you know...
Over the years at the trade show. Well, these other banks are at that trade show too.
Oh, yeah, no shortage of banks and lawyers at that thing.
No. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Could you have them bring little Buffalos when they come?
Little Buffalo chips or cow patties, what are you thinking?
Other new business before we get way off the rails?
Well, that's all I have for new business.
Not today.
Okay.
We're meeting Monday, so...
Right.
Monday or till Tuesday?
No, next Monday.
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 The 23rd.
Right. Monday, oh, cause Tuesday's the Home and Business Show.
And the Planning Board.
And the Planning Board, okay. Uh, that's where I'm at. Old business, North Pond Bylaw Correspondence?
Yeah, you have that in here, it's in your package.
Yep.
An old stuff, it was, uh, you know, a letter from a couple of other committees wanting to see if you were going to, you know, reconsider the placement of that article and what it's gonna do, or if you wanted to revisit it with them. So this is all part of you finalizing, this is a question you need to resolve as we begin to determine to finalize the, the warrant that you're gonna be signing next Monday.
It's under our general, or we...
Yeah, right here, it's yours, sir.
It was in your folder. Mr. Grinnell's and Mr. Pratt sent another letter.
Oh, okay, okay.
After...
Remember seeing it?
The other letter.
After the public informational session.
Oh, those, yes, yes, I read them.
And, you know, after a year, almost a year of dialogue on this issue.
Yeah.
So, um, have I been back here since we had our meeting at CRC? Did we have a meeting since then?
I don't believe so, because...
You were going to, we left...
From here and went to there.
Because it was last Tuesday, we had a short board meeting and then you went to that...
Correct.
CRC annual meeting.
That's right. So it was a lovely time, very well attended. There was a lot of good dialogue on that. The short story is...
How was the food?
It was excellent.
Good.
There was actually a former police officer, former selectman in the town of Southwick who told us about all the tickets that were issued that were thrown out in court. Because they're, they don't believe the law as it's written today on, at the state level is enforceable on the Congammon Lake. So his, his opinion is all more reason to put in force, uh, enforce a local bylaw.
And, and, and I did clarify with Brian Harrington from DEP about the definition of the lake as a body, you know, body of three, you know, ponds versus a lake. And, and, you know, they listed under their webpage as one single body.
And, you know, you could ask, like, it's, we've, this horse has been kicked and beaten to death. Whether it's the environmental police, the DEP, the Army Corps of Engineers, everyone's got their own opinion, whether it's a singular body of water or three. And we can all have our own opinion and it really doesn't matter.
They're all comfortable with their opinion.
And absolutely, and it really doesn't matter, right? And I still think regardless of which way we go on the warrant article, my personal opinion is the way the warrant article's written is, is the most appropriate way for a public body of water in the state of mass. It's not a private pond, it's, it's, you know, the great waters of the state. But the local bylaw cures any defect that is potentially there at the state level in interpreting how you evaluate the Congammon Lake lakes. It just solves the issue, it takes it off the table for discussion. So my opinion, I'd love to hear everyone else's, is we go forward. And if there's a process to follow after that, great, then let the process go through. Cause I, I was informed, like, rather late in the game that there's a process beyond what we've already gone through, potentially. Um, as far as potential reviewers of the bylaw, once it's accepted at town...
No different than, no different than a zoning bylaw.
Oh, it goes to the AG, I get it.
It goes to the AG and then they usually confer with the relevant state agencies that administer those.
So, and if that's the process, that's the process. So I, I'm comfortable with that process as a backstop to what we're doing.
Which actually, which actually would serve us well because when, when this other bylaw that you're looking at now was sent, uh, was developed, the chief did give it to that state agency for a number of months and did not get a response. So if you do it this way, once the Attorney General's Office sends it to that agency, they will have to give them a response. So you will finally get a response.
Or, or it'll be the same thing where non-response is constructive approval, like you can have with certain other...
Right.
Laws, right?
Right.
If, if no one objects, then they're, assumes you approve. So, but my, my opinion is I think we should just continue with, with, we've, we've talked this thing to death. I don't think we're gonna get any new opinions on...
That's fine, so if I understand you correctly, that will remain on the draft warrant that's gonna be finalized for your signature.
My opinion, subject to...
Joe, DeeDee, I...
Yeah, I think we've had the informational session. We, we told people it was gonna be a warrant article. And to pull it at this time, I think is really a disservice. You know, we're a representative town meeting form of government. So this is the purest way to do it.
Yeah, if they don't like it, they can vote it down. It's so simple.
Correct.
And, and we'll open up the next chapter when we open it.
And if they vote it down, we're right back where we are today. So, there you go. Right. Fiscal year 19, budget status review.
Yep, you have your line item budget in your packages. The Finance Committee approved it the other evening at their work session or their meeting. So, you know, the town accountant is, uh, wants to finalize the document that she has from them, which is essentially the Finance Committee handbook. So you would be wanting to make a motion to accept that budget document unless you're contemplating any other adjustments in the line items.
What do you think, boys?
I think we should just go with this. The Finance Committee is, is agreeable to it, we're agreeable to it. There we go.
Sad part is I'd love to add a few things, but in the same breath, I, I, I want the number lower, so... You know?
Right.
It is what it is.
You're concerned about the tax rate.
Right, yeah, I mean...
And you gotta be concerned about the tax rate because of what's happening on the federal level. You know, that's gonna impact people's taxes next year. From every accountant I'm talking to, although there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna get hit.
Yeah.
And, and for us to turn around and, and, and jockey or increase the, uh, real estate taxes, I mean, this is a modest increase, it gets us back to where we were two years ago, you know?
And once the new growth is really updated and calculated, it might, it's gonna...
It might come down a little bit, so... So it, it keeps, you know, people on an evil keel, evil keel. And, uh, we, plus we, uh, are taking care of some major issues, i.e. that culvert and ALS. So I think it's a good compromise.
So I'll make a motion to approve, or Doug, Ethan? I'm sorry.
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve as written the 2019 annual town meeting figures or budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a lot of work, gentlemen.
A lot of weeks getting ready, the hearings.
Yeah, it's a lot of work for, you know, everyone in the town that, that spends a lot of time getting the numbers ready and...
All the departments and boards and...
Making the tough cuts and, yeah. Uh, I will just put out there just to triple check when the town meeting documents are ready, that the Finance Committee's pros and cons, says that has the town CEO and that it's the Finance Committee, pros and cons. That was an issue last year. Someone raised an objection.
Oh, you haven't read yet, oh, I'm sorry. Don't you worry about a thing, Chairman.
Okay, so noted.
Fiscal year 19, oh, good lord. Fiscal year 19 STM and ATM warrant status, including borrowing authorization.
Right, you have here, right here. You wanna go through them?
Sure. This isn't here.
Um, this is here, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there it is, yeah.
Oh, that, no, no, that I should be worried about.
Oh, no.
No, no, no.
No, you're fine.
Don't look at that page, though.
Yeah, don't look at, yeah, just, just go to three, don't, don't...
Don't look at that page.
Don't look anywhere in there.
Just under the signatures, don't...
Yeah, just, are you chairman? I'm vice chairman, and then what's Russ?
You're sure your name's on the ballot?
Those are draft, actually.
It's all good.
Some people might think it's a power play, but don't you worry about it.
You text? I said, dude, you say wherever Cherry won, I don't care.
No, no, that, not a power play, I'll be...
Where are we at, 19, 19? Tomorrow's 18?
So essentially the special town meeting, you know, finishes the funding for items that are in fiscal year 18 and some of them go over into 19, so...
We can't be consistently wrong.
Yeah. We truly are musical chairs.
You know what, we work so well together, it's hard to tell where one of us ends and the other begins, it's all good.
So are there any questions on, it's your typical four article thing to, to finish the year, any questions on Article One? It reflects all of the, the decisions you've made on all the adjustments in the COLAs, the market adjustments, uh, backfilling FMA leaves, any, uh, retirements and things of that nature.
Article Two.
Okay, two. You'll find this is basically your year-end, um, snow and ice removal. Again, even though you made a, an adjustment of some funds for the HVAC issue that Bob's working on at Town Hall, this is your other funds to get through June thirtieth for the rest of the building's operations, cause you only had two grand left as a few weeks ago. Um, and then the, uh, police department uniform was part of the negotiated thing you did for the dress uniforms.
Yes.
Any other questions on two?
No.
Okay, three represents, uh, items that you took out of the annual budget. The depot street sidewalks, ten thousand, and again, that's to connect that segment from the Malone property, which you will see separately on the annual meeting, a easement, uh, document.
Right.
To authorize, the library carpet replacement to finish the main room, and then the balancing out of the, uh, Granville Road Culvert project, which is not the full amount he asked for, but y- you have the other seven hundred thousand in chapter ninety that he can pull the balance off of that.
Right.
Because this special town meeting warrant is predicated on you not programming and using five hundred thousand so that you can roll it over into next year's certified number. Any questions on Article Three?
Defer to the co-chairman.
Joseph, what, you're the co-chairman?
No, he's the co-chairman, he's, no, 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 on the annual, he's the co, and nevermind.
Yeah, yeah, I think on this one, I'm a clerk.
So you're the vice chairman.
Um, Article Four is, Article Four is our annual contribution.
What did we put in last year?
Just one.
Twenty? Okay.
And again, that's part of the, Doug, when we sat through that trust thing with Bart Allen, that's money that's invested.
All over it.
Okay, so we'll be adjusting some of the names, any questions on the special?
No.
So the board feels comfortable with that being finalized for next week.
Absolutely.
Cause the constable is lined up for late next week, so.
Big Bill?
Yep. Yeah, Kelly.
It is Kelly.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the annual, any issues on that, you'll see that the borrowing authorizations for the, the dump truck, the, um, uh, fire apparatus, rolling stock, and the, uh, revamped water pump station issue is on there. And then, of course, the ballot question.
You already skipped ahead to Article Six.
Yeah, you did.
You just went like a hundred miles an hour.
Well, no, that be, well, that says it right here on the agenda, the borrowing authorization, so we can go back to whichever.
We're just teasing you there.
Omnibus, omnibus.
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 Yeah.
We omnibus.
We omnibus, all right.
Two hundred forty thousand.
Now, you won't see the, there used to be an article on there w- that authorized you to do short-term borrowings, that is no longer required under the municipal monetization.
Oh, fantastic.
And that used to be a separate two-thirds, Bob.
Now we can just do it?
Now you can just do it, because it's the permanent long-term borrowing.
I get it.
Get the approval.
Okay, the dump truck, we talked about.
Yep, fire truck, talked about.
Yeah.
Yep. So that should be fire trucks.
Yes.
Or should we just say fire apparatus?
Where I heard rolling stock.
Rolling stock. Well, they have the new tires, so they are really aren't rolling stock.
All right, yeah, I'll see, I see what you mean now, I'll have to guess there. Unless you wanna put apparatus.
Whatever you, I don't know that I can spell apparatus. Yep, we talked about.
And then, of course, the one-seven, don't forget, you already did a vote of four hundred, so that only means you're, you're taking that, amending that, and then allowing another one-three to equal the one-seven.
Which we'll make clear at the town meeting.
Right, and again, they are also doing their, um, you know, their, uh, water rate study, they're talking to Italian Bond to, uh, make sure that's done.
Super.
Article Nine is barely standard.
That's your handbook, the only thing that changes in this is, you see where it says the capital outlay? We actually have to go through the budget in each capital item for each department, we have to list out if a department has a capital item. Cause that's not the same each year.
Right, and then the revolving fund amendments.
Right, you added in for sidewalk and council on aging house numbering.
That's gonna be very timely. The sidewalk revolving.
Well, I mean, by the time it finally comes.
One, potentially more subdivisions coming in, that could potentially be contributors to that.
To waivers.
Waivers that would be beneficial to be utilized elsewhere in town. So, it's, it's a win-win.
Oh, absolutely.
Departmental revolving fund annual spending limit authorization.
Yep, this is another IGI where, you, you know, um, that Ben says we have to do, we have to put the, uh, the limit on the spending, and then you, you mentioned what the accounts are, so that's, as you can see, you're adding the other revolving ones to it in Article Ten, and then you're having the list of what all the funds are and what their amounts are. And again, remember, you used to take an annual vote like this before.
So, can I ask you a quick question on that, so on, being an optimist, this has a limit on spending, so that's the limit in spending, that's not the limit on the balance of the account, correct?
Right, cause I, right, cause you could have money coming in and out of it.
You could have, like, in one year, you might have a lot come in, and, but you only can spend out eighty thousand, yeah, okay, got it, thank you. And.
And that, and that can be, and that's an annual review, so if the board comes into an issue and they wanna have that examined.
Right.
We can have, we can update that for next year.
Right, go up or down with it.
Well, it seems like a reasonable, the amounts seem reasonable, but I could see where in any of these, that the balance could easily exceed the annual expenditure amount, as it should. Community preservation annual budget?
Yep, that is, um, that, you will see in the next page, we are still, um, resolving the admin computation, because they used to use it based on the general unreserved, but the actual statute that I put at the end of your document here says it's, it's five percent of the annual revenues in the community preservation fund, it does not distinguish the reservation, so Ben and I are clarifying that with the town accountant.
But it's a matter of where you draw the money from, too, I think that's their intent, right?
So that's something, well, we need to make sure we follow with the laws, so.
No, I understand that, so the calculation may be a weird percentage number to get the amount you need.
Right.
But what they're saying is that you fund that line item from the general unreserved portion. So as you don't take the administrative part from the historical balance, or the.
They, they, they may have been doing that historically, but once we pulled the law out, we have to make sure we're gonna do it is according to the law.
Right, but I underst- but that's their intent, I understand them, the calculation is based on the total of the fund.
Right.
But they wanna make sure that the admin expense is drawn from general unreserved and not a singular, or not the other two line items.
Well, it actually may end up just being called from the, from the total fund balance.
Right.
So it's gonna depend upon how the town attorney finalizes it with the town accountant.
Actually, let them figure it out. So that's thirteen.
So that's thirteen.
Fourteen is the APR.
Yep.
Yep, another APR down on, uh, North Long, yeah, you did one on Laro Road right next to it, last year.
And then, um, Article fifteen is to the repairs of the roof at the Moore House.
Rehabilitation and replacement, right, generally, you can't use these funds for repairs.
Uh, Article sixteen, oh, that's a small one. Eleven million dollar school budget. And then seventeen is usually their cap?
Yep.
Article eighteen, marijuana zoning bylaw, with a couple of As, Bs, and Cs options in case of the outcome of the ballot initiative. Nineteen is the adoption of the map for Article eighteen. Uh, twenty, recreational marijuana general bylaw.
And that goes with the ballot question.
That's related to the ballot question, so that article being on, not, it will be on the warrant, but whether it gets taken up at the town meeting depends on the outcome of the ballot initiative.
Same thing for number twenty-one.
Yes, the opposite.
Right.
So if the article, if the, if the ballot issue passes, then we would adopt Art- we would vote on Article twenty, and if that passes too, we would then
Remove.
Remove twenty-one, cause you need both, right, okay.
It's a menu.
Yeah. Article twenty-two, that's the dead horse. Article twenty-three, temporary repairs to private ways, this was out of our outcome with all the snow plowing and so on and so forth, this would give the town the ability to access and repair certain private ways and affect an assessment to those of budding those ways, right, veterans. Twenty-four pilot.
Right, that's the authorization that we're gonna respond, any issues there, straightforward, working with the assessors on that?
Uh, twenty-five, authorization to sell old library, so this is also an article that I know co-chairman Fox has been a, a very big proponent of to get this property back into productive use.
And we have supplied information on the operating costs for the old library for the, uh, Finance Committee.
So I heard. Permanent easement from Whip City to Undai, thank you very much, so they are going to, if we vote on this to accept it, they're gonna give us an easement to put our pump station, right?
And that would be the new one under the other bond authorization at the beginning.
Correct, on the one-four. And then, uh, Article twenty-seven is from Mr. and Mrs. Malone, will be giving the town an easement, um, a permanent easement to properly locate some sidewalks on that piece of property from Rails End down to Rail Trail.
For which you're going to have the money on the special to do that segment.
To do that, correct.
Yes. So that is, uh, that is the annual, gentlemen.
Very good.
Okay, so, we'll make some of those two changes.
Is there any?
Oh, you did see the signature on the last page, though.
Yes, I did, yes, I did.
Of the, of the annual?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll get that, they'll get that fixed up.
Again, I think there was a power play going on.
Does anybody have any concerns or thoughts on the particular order of these warrant articles, or it's fine such as it is?
I think it's fine the way it is, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, what are you worried about?
None at all, I just know that that is
That's your prerogative.
A prerogative to, to order them. I don't know that there's gonna, I don't think you're gonna have anybody, I honestly don't think you're gonna have a lot of people come out for any one particular issue, and I think there's nothing on this ballot that need, if someone really wants to move it up, they can move it up. But, you know, keeping the zoning together and, and the other land use things together makes sense, and the budget items together, and CPA's always been right after those rev- revolve, I don't have an issue with how they're laid out.
No. I think it's fine.
Well, the consistency, hopefully, people will understand it and things will move right along. It's when you try to move things out for, that, that, all, all of a sudden, you wasted a lot of time.
What are you hiding, what are you doing?
Yeah, correct.
Where, where you could've achieved a couple more articles.
Right, and that's why, Ben, I wanna make sure that the things that happened last year don't happen this year, like, really double checking the, um, issues relating to the CPA values.
Yeah.
That was an issue, that was floor amendments, and then
Yeah.
under the borrowing authorization last year, the word OR versus OUR.
Right.
Those have been addressed to this year, so we're trying to make sure that we don't have those types of issues arise that would slow down the board's, uh, processing of this very important, uh, document before the inhabitants of the town.
That's a one-time-a-year use the word inhabitants.
Inhabitants.
Unless you have a special, then you use it twice.
Are my goats inhabitants? No.
Okay, sir?
I, I just thought of something I, I should probably mention under new business, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we were signing the cards and, uh, the, uh, one of our water commissioners had open-heart surgery and was in intensive care, just got out of intensive care today, so maybe we could, uh, get a card for Mr. Hosmer.
Yep, oh, he was doing good, though.
He's out of intensive care, and I thought he might've had a, uh, a stroke, but it turned out he did not, you know, so, so that's, that's good.
Yeah. Add it to the pile.
Well, he probably has time to listen to this now, so, thoughts to you, Mr. Hosmer?
Well, if he's listening, they just figured out you were grumpy, sir, you didn't have a stroke, so.
That would be, uh, co-chairman DDI.
No, no, we get along great, we get along great, we jab each other all the time.
Okay, is, have we, the warrant is set?
Yep, we're down to the ultimate, we'll finalize it.
You guys gotta finish your finishing.
We'll bring it to you on Monday for another look at.
Right, okay. Southwick Police Department Lieutenant Recruitment.
Yep, the deadline's tomorrow, so I'll bring you stuff on Monday.
Yep. There'll be like six applicants, six or seven applicants, so. Just to see that look on your face. You applied, didn't you?
No, no.
That's, that's the constable.
You will never see that, I can promise you that.
I'm just gonna get off of this, Westfield MOA for Electrical Inspection Service.
Yep, um, well, Arthur's recovering from a surgery and you guys are reviewing that to, um, to, uh, to act on his recommendations, so at a future meeting, you should do that.
We're waiting for our.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you don't have to, you could just.
No, I, I think it'd be a good idea, because he's gonna be the one that, uh,
Yeah.
it's either gonna be a good thing or a bad thing, so.
Yeah, it's only a one-year arrangement anyway.
Okay, do we call him Lefty now, or? Southwick Cultural Council Art Show, uh, somebody mailed something to my house already, my wife's all excited, thank you very much.
That's why I checked.
I, I should.
Take credit cards.
I don't get home early enough to get the mail.
That's why I checked the mail.
Other old business, before we go into executive session, it's gonna take a while to clear the room. How was Jade A?
Wonderful.
Good? Okay.
What else happened this week? That's it, I think it's.
I did, uh, have a conversation with the DPW supervisor, you know, because we had requested a little more detail than, than normal, um.
About our last storm-ish.
And I guess he spoke to, spoke to you too.
Long conversations.
Was that today or yesterday?
I don't even know anymore.
We were chasing each other around, I haven't hooked up with them.
Right, he's still trying to reach out to you.
We went back and forth, yeah.
Right, so, I told him you were very busy and, uh, might not even make tonight's meeting, but, uh, but to keep, finish the report.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, I, I told him my concerns were just that there, there seemed to be some issues, and I was wondering if it was because of hired contractors, or was a, a certain route that didn't get done, and he related to me that, uh, they did have some issues, you know, with personnel and, and equipment, and it was a holiday.
It was a holiday, that, that, some of us don't re- look at it as a holiday, but it really was a holiday.
And apparently, uh, the forecast wasn't talking about snow, but he did tell me that even roads that did not get plowed, uh, were salted, so.
Yes, I did see the salt truck everywhere.
So I told him, finish the report, so that if there's any questions from, uh, our constituents, that we'd be able to, uh, answer them.
It's a weird deal.
Well, and it, it was a holiday and school vacation week, so I imagine even some of the guys we would regularly call are away with their families, cause it's school vacation week. It wasn't that, oh, it's school vacation week, so we're not plowing the roads.
No, no.
It's more like, there's nobody to plow the roads, right, so, I, I hope. So, I, and I will follow up with Chris as well, just to make sure that
Yeah.
we do that, cause I did, I'm sure you've got a few phone calls and messages and whatnot, and I.
I didn't get any.
Really?
I did. I sat there and cried at five in the morning out my window.
Yeah, cause that was your opening day, right?
Yeah, I postponed it, I postponed it today.
This is on you.
Oh, yeah, I just.
I decided not to run in the marathon because of.
Couldn't get there, or couldn't reach Southwick, yeah.
It was terrible.
Just decided, yeah.
Yeah, that was it.
Motion.
You were running there for bagels, or you were running the, the?
It was that one lady that took the T half the race, right? Move to go into executive session to conduct strategies. These days, you might not be able to get to the end on the T, move to go into executive session to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, and not reconvene in open session, move to go in executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel, not reconvene, move to go in executive session to conduct contract, I did that one, not reconvene in open session, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that the chair or the co-chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and not reconvene in open session, and to go in executive session and comply with or act on the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, not convene in open session, and Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with his privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction to enforce such right and connection therewith to award damages. Uh, Doug Moblen, aye.
Joe DDI.
Let's fuck that.